Hi, oh hello, hello. I got the okay that we are live. Just hoping everything works. Welcome to She's Connected. This group is for the stressed out overwhelmed moms who need to pause. And connect to God herself and her kids. Yay, I got it muted, so you don't hear an echo. The last week I was a little high on my glucose test, which happens every single pregnancy. But that means that you have to take the three hour test. And I was so nervous about it. I was even dreaming about it. I thought it was gonna be super high. I got out all of my testing equipment, so I could test my blood sugars throughout the days. And it was crazy. It's a whole new process. I have a new doctor, because we're in a different city and it's a new place and I didn't know how it was gonna be and how where I was gonna wait and all this stuff. And my one hour number is always a little high. But I did have gestational diabetes in one pregnancy. So we turned it into a lesson and we did blood sugar. Um, learning about blood sugar, learning about our bodies and how they process all the sugar with my kids for homeschool, all that stuff. Everyone got tested after watching me test myself and change out all the equipment and stuff to make it safe. And they some were nervous about it, some were scared, some were like, let's do this and it was kind of a fun experiment. Um, everybody got to test their blood sugar and all that kinda stuff, so it was pretty cool. And I still don't like the three hour test. Um, thankfully Hazel helped out after her classes, so I could go by myself. Cause you know, when you're there for that many hours, it would have been even more stressful with kids, but I was still anxiously waiting the results after the test, even though during the test I was also testing my own blood sugar to see the results like in time. And it's so funny, I related them back to the results they got to what I had and some of the numbers were way off, so I don't know how they test the blood, but anyways, it was an experience. So have you had an experience this week where you just needed to lean on the hut a little bit more? Let me know in the comments. I see Bev here, hello with the waving hands and Tina from Michigan, that's so awesome. Um, so this blood sugar test, the three hour test, they take your blood four times. So once in the beginning and then you drink this gross sugar syrup drink. And then they take your blood three more times every hour after that. And then they stressed to me that like if you're not back at this time waiting in the lab that you would have to start all over, so that stressed me out a little bit. And I was nervous about getting back there in time, because I did not wanna sit around in the lab. I went outside actually. Cause it was so much nicer outside than inside. Uh, and an hour after the drink, my blood sugar was two points higher than what they want. But all the other times it fell within the range, so I passed. I'm so excited, I'm so glad. The last time I had gestational diabetes was ten years ago and that baby was due in December. It's a pretty terrible like time to have to watch, you know, all the food you're putting into your body, testing all your blood sugar around the holidays. So I'm so glad that I will not have to do that again this time. So I'm just praising God for helping me get through the test, um, making a way for Hazel to help out watching kids. And all this stuff, you know, let me know in the comments like Tina, where you're watching from and Bev, she's from Michigan too. She has three adult kids, thirteen grandkids, seven grandsons and six granddaughters with the next one coming in January. That's so awesome. We're excited, um. Yeah, even if you're watching that replay, put it in the comments, so I can see who's who hops on and that kinda stuff. And together is better, like I always say. I'm Cherry, mom of nine plus baby on the way, like I was talking about. This baby is thirty weeks now, I can't believe it, as big as a zucchini or motorcycle helmet. Probably about three pounds now, maybe I should show you my belly. I guess I will, cause I know, I know Bev wants to see it. So here is baby. Getting bigger now all the time, the kids are like, oh, your belly's so big. At least I have a baby in there to to say, yeah, my belly is big, it's supposed to be, the baby's growing. Oh, I see Jessica hopped on, she's a month of ten from Michigan, which is awesome. I love having Jessica here and I miss you so much, being able to connect in person, cause now we live so far away. I'm in Springfield, Missouri. Inspiring families and moms like you to live a life connected to God and sometimes that's hard. When you have a bunch of little kids or even when you just have one kid. Or let's say you are an empty nester and now you're figuring out what kind of person you are, because now that mom title is kind of off your plate and you aren't on all the time. But now what? So you're trying to figure that out. And you know, this mom life of ours, it doesn't stop when our kids get turn eighteen, it still continues. And you're still a steward of God's um creatures, like these human beings that you helped raise. He gave to you to raise for him. They're still a part of your life, you get to pray over them and for them. And um, that's what this group's about. So here we go. So that to this week's topic is the JXP Acts People Problems Part One. When you have people getting together, there's always gonna be problems. But we're gonna focus on those external problems, because we're diving into Acts, chapter five where um, they I'm saying they as in the apostles. Um, they had a hardship. They had persecution at that time. You know, you talk about Jesus and people of that time could hurt you, could persecute you, could put you in jail, those kinds of things. And sometimes I can't even believe that nowadays, because we have freedom of speech and all that kinda stuff. It's pretty crazy, but I do wanna say welcome to High Five Friday. Give those high fives to you. Jessica misses our Thursday get together, so do I sometimes on a Thursday. I'm like, oh, it would be nice to have some people over. I actually did start inviting some other moms to my house on Thursdays and then it got a little bit too much for the pregnancy and all that stuff. I kinda toned it down, but those get togethers, come on, together we're better. How did you practice following Jesus this week? We are going to take a look again, I'm gonna show you. I hope it doesn't annoy you, maybe you should tell me. Seeing this practice sheet, does it help you? Does it remind you of the things that you can do to share the good news with others? So here is our practices that are written down in this curriculum. Um, our daily reading, are you getting in the word or are you hearing the word? Or are you repeating the words, saying the words, something to do with God's word? Missional impulse or Holy Spirit activation is what I like to call it. Sharing those meals, we all have to eat meals. Are you sharing your meals with any people? Give good away, talk about what Jesus is doing. So let me know in the comments, you know, what practice did you experience this last week? Did you focus on one of those or did you accidentally do one of those? Let me know. How did it go? And speaking of giving good away, our house received a couple surprise packages. I can't believe it, Tina, you're here. Thank you so much for sending some love our way. And your note was so special to me and um, the kids were super excited to open a box. And to like dive in and show me all the stuff or whatever was in there and then I didn't really, I just was like, give me that paper, I wanna see what was written to me and that was just so special to me. So it's up next to my bed on my nightstand. And it was amazing, I'm so glad that you're a part of She's Connected here. You are such a blessing and there was a lot of excitement around that special delivery. I mean, even just the mailman pulling up with a box, that's exciting. And then getting it inside and then the person wanted, you know, everyone wants to open it. So someone has to get the scissors, all the stuff. It's a big ordeal here in this house, so when you get something in the mail, especially a package. And especially stuff, I mean, they love junk mail too, but especially stuff from people. Um, my Aunt Joyce sent something to the baby, which was really cool and her no- her note was so sweet as well. So thank you so much Aunt Joyce for your kindness too. Don't you just love getting mail from friends and family? I mean, let me know in the comments. Um, which is, which warms your heart most? Getting a s- special mail or sending special mail to someone else? Sometimes when you send something in the mail, you don't hear back from that person, so you don't even know if they got it. And that could be a little bit disappointing. I know my kids love getting mail and every time they talk about getting mail. I tell them, while you can't just receive mail, you have to also give mail if that's something that you enjoy getting. And there is a couple of my kids who will send things out like all the time. And they barely hear back from the people and this could be a little disappointing. But we aren't sending it to get something in return usually. So um, just let's look at it a different way than our kids would typically think, like they want that mail. And that's why they were sending it out. I always have to remind them, you're not sending it out to oh, excuse me, to get something in return, you're sending it out to share your love. And Tina, of course, she loves sending stuff and you you sent it and it was awesome. Oh, and Jessica mentioned our yearly update. Yeah, we like to send out a yearly kinda Christmas card, but sometimes it doesn't get out around Christmas, sometimes it's later than that. But I love sending, I love getting those in the mail. And so that was something early on, I was like Ted, we need to send out a yearly like update thing. Oh, yeah, and we all have, you know, social media, we're on Facebook, the highlights here as well. I love seeing Jessica's posts when she's at the at the water or out the pitcher view out her back window, seeing her property and that kinda stuff. Oh, and Beth says that that's a tough one, cause she loves both so much and that's so true. Um, I think for us too, we love sending it and we love getting it. So that's crazy. Oh my goodness. We're heading into Acts, chapter five, like I said. This chapter starts out with something that may seem a bit stark. It moves into healings, signs and wonders as the apostles continue to share the good news of Jesus. So Jesus was brought back to life, he ascended into heaven and now what? Um, and this is where we're moving into, they're trying to grow the church. The Holy Spirit has been uh, put upon the apostles and the group of believers. The group of believers is growing, it's like thousands, I can't even imagine that. Those kinda numbers and as the numbers continue to grow, so does the opposition. So you have, let's say a Facebook group and it's growing, it's ga- gaining traction, but we're talking about God. And then Facebook puts a ban on our page or something like that. And then um, people could put comments here and there about not liking the stuff that we're talking about. Our group is private, so it's a little bit different, but I was just trying to relate it to today's world. Um, they are growing in numbers, it's like their church is growing. And then they have people who don't like this. And what I find super funny is it's the religious leaders who were opposed to the ways that these followers of Jesus were just disrupting the status quo of their community. I mean, these were high up people, these were very educated people, these were people who knew the word of God, they studied it, they memorized it, they know it. And then here they are flat out missing the point. But they were jealous to the point that they arrested, they tried, they beat the apostles. Uh, ultimately, the apostles were released. And they end up praising God for the opportunity to suffer for the sake of Christ, which is pretty amazing in the turn of events in that time. Um, jails back then were not like today's jails. Um, they were pretty terrible and rough, I can't even imagine being in a jail at that time. And here they were praising God for the opportunity, that's kinda crazy in itself. Um, relationships can be messy, especially where there are entire groups of people. Who seem to all belong to the same group, but then they don't agree. These religious leaders were supposed to know God's word, they're supposed to be on their side. And that's not what happened. There are so many things that can divide us, especially when we do not understand. It seems these followers of Jesus, they lean into the tension instead of trying to avoid it. Even though it's quite uncomfortable, which that's surprising to me too. When we get into uncomfortable situations, what are we more likely to do? We probably don't wanna stay there, we're probably gonna go somewhere else. Have you ever had a disagreement in your own house? Okay, you're supposed to be on the same team as your husband or spouse and your kids, you're on the same team doing the same, we all want to get to, let's say, this park date. We all have an agreement, we want to go there, we want to do this thing. And then you wake up and you feel like this kid cannot get the right clothes on, this kid can't find his shoes. That kid is having a tantrum, this kid is having some bathroom issues. All this stuff is happening and you're like, I thought we were in agreement. I thought we were on the same page and trying to do the same thing. And here all of these things are coming up against getting it done. I've had plenty of disagreements in my house with my husband, with my kids, with everyone. It happens, because people don't always agree with each other. And even if you do agree, like I was saying, we all agreed, we wanted to go to this thing. But then, you know, things come up. We had a plan for a homeschool hangout movie theater day. On Oliver, no, not Oliver, Miles's birthday, this is the twenty first. And this was uh, has been on the calendar for a long time, we all knew about it, we were excited, all this stuff. And like thirty minutes before we were supposed to go, Ted turned on the TV show and I was like, wait, what? And it was a new TV show, so my kids, it's not something that they've seen a lot, they're excited and they're gonna be engorged in this TV show. I was like, I need help, we gotta get this, we gotta get that, we gotta make sure it's in the car, we gotta grab the vacuum cleaners, all this stuff. And he just turned on a TV show. I was like, what are you doing? So there's a little bit of opposition there and then when I rallied everybody, he actually ended up going to the bathroom. I turned the TV off, cause I was like, we need to go, remember we have this plan? We need to start popping popcorn, all this stuff. So I was delegating all the things. We did get to the movie theater place, movie theater room on time and um, everything was fine, but I felt like there were some people that were stopping me from doing this thing that we all wanted to do. Oh boy, Beth says that that ha- that happens here all the time, disagreements, we're always disagreeing with each other. Even though we kind of agree, like we, we agreed on going to this movie theater room. We invited people. Then, I don't know if it's just elapsed in our memory or something, because it can happen the other way too. We will agree on going out to lunch this uh, my husband and I love going out to lunch on Sundays, it's a normal thing. Our kids know it, they do lunch together and we go out to lunch, it's amazing. But sometimes my husband will be like, oh, I wanna take you out on a different day and I'm like, that's awesome. But then I have all the things that I need to deal with or handle. We gotta have a dinner for the kids, we gotta have, um, you know, everybody has to get taken care of and we can't just go whenever we want. And so I get a little defensive there, I'm like, we didn't plan this, you can't do it last minute. And then this person's going there, you know, the schedule and it's just crazy anyways. We don't need to hear more about all my disagreements. Oh, Jessica says, seems like that is what happens anytime we try to leave the house, yeah, okay. Anytime we try to go anywhere, we know for sure, it's on the calendar, we're supposed to do this thing. Uh, oh my goodness. I just learned, I don't know why I'm telling you guys this, but I just learned that my husband does not wash my kids' faces when he gives them a bath. And I was blown away, he's been giving them baths for nineteen years. Oh my goodness, he's supposed to be teaching the kids how to bathe themselves, how to have hygiene, how to clean their bodies. He's supposed to be helping me, we're supposed to be in agreement. Now I'm just laughing about it, cause I just found it out. I can't believe it. I was like, I was like, what? My teenager is like, I don't get water on my face when I shower, I was like, what? You have to in order to clean it. And he told me about my husband not washing their face during bath time. I can't believe it, this is opposition here. We were supposed to be in agreement. You, we, I give my kids baths and he gives them baths, but if we're both doing it differently or he's not cleaning their face, but I am, then they're just like, oh, mom's being silly or whatever, but this is something you're supposed to do. You're supposed to wash your face. Do you think that too? Like, am I just being silly? Or is this something that my husband should be doing when he gives my kids baths? Wash your face when you take a bath or shower, right? Well, people don't always agree. Oh, okay, I'm gonna stop laughing about that one and and move on. Now, we're gonna read from Acts five. Um, verses nineteen through twenty in that lectio divina practice. Three times through, so head, heart and hands, think, feel and do. So that's what we're gonna think about. The first one is think, use your head during the night. An angel of the Lord opened the doors of the jail. He led the apostles outside and said, go and stand in the temple, tell the people everything about this new life. So what does this make you think about? And I can't believe the apostles were put in jail for spreading the good news first off. Would I be brave enough to talk about Jesus if I thought I would get put in jail? And earlier I mentioned Facebook kinda bans people or blocks accounts for posting certain things and when you know the rules, you follow the rules, so you don't get put in like Facebook jail. But if one of the rules was you can't say or write about Jesus or God, what would I do? God is the foundation of this group. Would I just go somewhere else to talk about God? Maybe I'd come up with code words or just keep doing what I'm doing and then maybe get banned, I don't know, that's crazy. This is what I'm thinking about. What are you guys thinking about when you hear this verse? And Jessica says, that's awesome, you best share those jobs. Yeah, except then Ted is doing the job completely different than me. Oh, and her husband hasn't bathed her kids ever, wow, okay. Well, I didn't want Ted to get stuck with never giving them baths, because we have lots of little kids like you, Jessica. And I was like, it needs to be on your schedule, on the calendar, but we do it so differently. I don't know about you, Jessica, but when I bathe my children, it's this time of connection. It's a time where we can talk about things, it's a time where we can laugh and I play games with them. And we get clean and then afterward, there's all this like snuggle time. And Ted is the exact opposite. And I understand when you have a lot of little kids, you wanna get the job done and move on. But I take that bath time as an opportunity and he's just kinda like assembly line scrub, 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 really and then he's done and sends them to an older kid to get them wa- uh, their clothes on. So completely different ways of giving baths to kids. But I was so grateful for all these years that I put it on the schedule. I made him do it, even though he didn't use it as an opportunity to dive deeper. Yeah, the assembly line, I mean, sometimes I do that too. But when I have that like moment to really sit with one kid especially, then it's just makes it even more special. And there was even one time where I took some videos of our bath time and I made a family film about it. Um, it can't really be put on Facebook because of them not wearing clothes and that kinda thing. I tried to put it on Facebook. And that was a little bit sketchy. Um, and I don't want my kid, it was on Facebook to private it under a private thing for certain amount of people, it wasn't public or anything like that, but um, that was so special to me, cause they are so different now and even what they say. Um, we remember it, cause he said raising fingers, cause his fingers were all wrinkly and that kinda stuff. Uh, now I'm getting on a tangent about bathing children. Tina says, Jesus leads us into the right path. I love that saying, thank you for sharing that and he does lead us. As long as we're willing and open to like listen and um, you know, use all of our senses to see and to hear and to be there, um, then he'll lead us down that right path. Yes, take me down that right path, God. Oh, and then Beverly asked, at what age do you not bathe the kids? Uh, I don't know, it's different for each kid. Um, Ted stopped bathing the girls sooner and I took over. Ted continues to bathe the boys longer and I uh, I stopped bathing them a little bit sooner. Boys, girls, all the stuff. But um, I don't know, probably around age eight or so. Then we kind of like transition for them taking their own bath. Uh, but you could still be in the room or in the area and reminding them to wash all the bits, except Ted doesn't remind them to wash their face for some reason. Anyways, oh my goodness, the face, I still cannot believe that I found that out this week. Say, a face isn't part of your body? Oh, I was kinda confused, uh, he doesn't clean your ears either. And another thing he does, okay, so Jessica, he will bathe them. He does the surface stuff, but he doesn't clip the nails either, he doesn't brush the hair after, like all the stuff that goes along with the bath. So I'm just grateful for what he does do and I cannot believe that I found out just now that he does not wash their faces. But now I know. So I have to teach them extra that their face is a part of their body and you need to wash it. Here's the second time reading through this scripture and we're gonna dive into our hearts and our feelings. During the night, an angel of the Lord opened the doors of the jail. He led the apostles outside and said, go and stand in the temple, tell the people everything about this new life. So what does this make you feel? And I love how they tap into I don't know, just like God knows everything. He knew everything that was happening in that city. He knew right where the apostles were in jail. He he knows about the religious leaders and their hearts and God made a way. He sent an angel to get them out of this hard place, which happened to be jail. God knows everything about you and me too, he knows what you're going through. And he is working, he is making a way for us to do amazing things in our families. And he is working, he is making a way for us to do amazing things in our families. He's asking us to go and tell our kids and the people around us about him and his ways. That's what this verse makes me feel. Oh, I love this, okay, so Bev, does Ted wash his face when he showers, yes! That is what I don't understand. We're still on this shower thing, bath, oh my goodness, maybe thanks with the bath. The water is kind of, you know, the water you were sitting in, and so like, why would you wash your face with it? I don't know, maybe I need to ask him, but in the shower, he washes his face. And I think he tells the kids to wash their face when they shower, so I don't know about this. Do I need to dive deeper, or do I just need to leave it be, I don't know. We need to stop thinking about this though. Tina, I would stand by his side no matter what, and you know what, that is so awesome. And I want to think that I would do the same thing. But when death is involved, like they could get killed. I don't know if I'd be strong enough, I hope I'd be strong enough to stand by his side no matter what. But if people were gonna persecute my children because I talked about God? Ouch, I don't know, this is such a hard decision, I mean, I want to say, no, God is a priority and he needs to be known. But at the same time, I want to protect my children and my life. So yikes, it's a tough decision and they were in a tough place, but they praised God through it all. And I know for sure that I would praise him and he would be a priority, but then like you might change your actions a bit. So now we're gonna move into actions, the third run through is our hands and what we're going to do. So listen to the verse and what is God calling you to do? During the night, an angel of the Lord opened the doors of the jail. He led the apostles outside and said, go and stand in the temple. Tell the people everything about this new life. How can you apply this to your life today? I mean, let me know in the comments, what is coming up for you, what did God hit you with? What can you do this week? I think my action is gonna be that trusting, trusting in him to make a way for me to do the last sentence of the verse, to tell people about him and his ways. He pressed it on my heart to make a Facebook group, even when I don't, I don't even like social media. And I don't want people on social media, and here I am using social media. Do what God is calling you to do. God, I will trust that he will help me teach my kids about him and to set them up for success. Tina, spread the word, oh man, I gotta go over here and love this comment right now, cause I love it. Uh, be more bold with my faith, Jessica, that is awesome. Yes, wow, okay, I love that I can see the comments today too, because you guys are here and that is awesome. I, I think for me, that trust is kind of hitting really hard. And just being able to sit in him. And again, I'm reading a book called The Read of God, and it was talking about, see the reads that they used to turn into instruments. And I really, every time I sit down to read it, I'm just like, God, how can I be an instrument for you? And so that's kind of hitting me a little bit right now too, I can picture Gideon, he's got one of those um instruments that are made out of reeds or bamboo or something, where you can blow in it. And I'm seeing him playing this instrument for me. And sometimes when he plays it, it doesn't sound the greatest, but God is saying, that doesn't matter, I want you to be an instrument of me and spread the good news, yeah. So how do you measure success? I talked about that in my little thing, like, you know, setting my kids up for success. And then that gets me thinking about what is success to me? Let me know in the comments, how do you measure success? So Hazel was approved and is finalizing the process to move out on her own. Well, not on her own, with a friend, so she's gonna have a roommate, until she gets married next year, I can't believe she's engaged. Um, she really wanted actually to live outside of our house, outside of a hu- our home before getting married. Just to have that experience of living on her own before she gets married and then they're a family. And, you know, she's being taken care of by um, her husband. And it's happening, I can't believe it, I have so many mixed emotions about it, especially because I'm pregnant and all that stuff. But I'm so proud and excited for her, she is working really hard, she's making it happen. But that's not the success story, that's not the part that I'm excited about, like, yeah, she got approved, she's doing it, all this stuff. But I'm way more proud that she prioritizes God in her life. She has been leaning on him to help her along this whole journey of becoming an adult. And earlier in the summer, she wanted to move out and it just wasn't working and things weren't lining up. And the friend was having, like, they couldn't get on the same page and, you know, they couldn't find a place, all this stuff. And she didn't let that sway her, or she wasn't like, I'm gonna make a way and like find a way. She wasn't like, oh, this isn't working, I'm gonna quit. It was kind of leaning on God through the whole process and just deciding that that exact time wasn't right. And then she revisited it, this idea every kind of month. And I just love how she makes time and space for God in many parts of her, like every day. So I'll talk to her about her classes and she'll say, well, before class, I spent some time reading this verse and this is what happened today. And it's just so awesome to hear her living this out. Um, this journey that we're taking with Christ um, as adults, as moms. And it's for our kids too. So how do I measure success, by the fruits of the spirit? Am I glorifying God every day, even when I'm neck deep in chores and mess? Even when I'm frustrated by a kid having a tantrum, or when we're waiting? We go to our dentist's appointments early, like we are there five to fifteen minutes early to the dentist's appointment. Because they say to be early, and I'm a pretty like, okay, I'm gonna be there on time, I said I'm coming, so I'll be there. And things happen sometimes, so we always leave time for that kind of stuff. But they don't even call us back until forty-five minutes after our appointment time. I start to get a little bit like, okay, come on, you said to be here fifteen minutes early. We're sitting here in the waiting room, we have all of our paperwork done within two minutes. And what now, now we have to wait forty-five minutes before you call us back? I am sitting there wasting time, wasting time, that's what I call this place, the dentist. The time waster, because every time, it's a big waste of time. They teach their people to show up super late because they never take you back on time, and it's so irritating. So you can see how annoyed I am getting, just sitting here talking about it. And I am very annoyed at the office, but I also have children with me. And I have to keep reminding them that we're just gonna be patient and wait our turn, all this stuff. But on the inside, I am pretty annoyed, do you ever get like that? Please let me know in the comments that I'm not the only one that is so irritated by things like that. But then, you know, how do I measure success? Am I showing love, do I have joy, peace, patience? Am I kind, are my thoughts good overall, am I being faithful, gentle? Do I have self-control, these are the fruits of the spirit, and that is how I can measure success. In Matthew seven sixteen, Jesus said, you will recognize them by their fruits. The fruits of the spirit are what I want to be known for. So I don't want them to think, when I come to that dentist's office, oh great, there's that mom who gets mad every time. Like, I want them to know me for the fruits of the spirit, I want them to see God through me. Even though I'm not like talking about God to them, I want them to see God in my actions. And so when I'm sitting there, it takes a lot of breathing to relax and trust that this process is gonna finish out. And to teach my kids, cause Dade was getting pretty upset about waiting there that time, cause he had a party to go to. Afterward, he had a band party to go to, and he was just like, I'm gonna be late now. And I was like, Dade, you might not be late, what if we get back there and they go pretty fast, we'll see, I don't know, but. Uh, that is ex- that is success, the fruits of the spirit, um, growing in your life and showing up, success. So let's focus on that, I guess. Okay, who else said something in the comments? God is on Hazel's side, that's right, yes, God is on Hazel's side, I love it, and she is just inviting him. Right to be on her side, and I love that, every time we go to the doctor's office, we feel the same way, annoyed and disappointed, all of it, oh my goodness, okay. So now I know, you're doctor, cause you'll tell me, oh, I have a doctor's appointment, or Rich has a doctor's appointment, and I'm just like, okay. But now I know, we can give each other accountable. Oh, did you show the fruits of the spirit when you were at that doctor's office, uh. It can be very stressful, but we got God on our side. That's all for today, thank you so much for being here, we are, you know, moving along here. We will be live again next Friday at twelve thirty central, that's one thirty eastern. I hope to see you in the comments then, and happy connecting everyone. Go and spread the fruits of the spirit with the people around you so they can see God. You know, remember to praise him even when the things are hard. Because our lives, even though we have Christ in our life, that doesn't mean it's gonna be easy. And we're not gonna have any trouble, he actually tells us we are gonna have trouble, and then this is what we get to do in our trouble, we get to lean on him. So have a great weekend, everybody, thanks for being here.